You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay, we'll call this meeting the Branford Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It is a special meeting. It is Wednesday, August 7, 2024. We'll start by, and I have 7:01 PM, I believe, right now. We'll start by introducing members of the commission in staff. So Joe Chadwick, Joe, are you here?
Joe Chadwick is present.
Thank you, Joe. Fred Russo, Fred, are you here?
Fred Russo, present.
Joe Bayuso, Joe, are you here?
Joe Bayuso, here.
Thanks, Joe. Marcy Palusi, Marcy, are you here?
Marcy Palusi's here.
Thank you, Marcy. Massimo Legori, Massimo, are you here?
Massimo Legori's here.
Thanks, Massimo. Sharon Hutner, Sharon, are you here? Sharon's waving, although...
Oh, sorry. I thought I had unmuted, made you a co-host. I apologize. Should be all set. There you go.
All right, there I go. Sharon Hutner is here.
Thank you, Sharon. Our staff this evening is our town planner, Harry Smith. Harry, you're here.
I am.
And our assistant planner, Evan Bryning. Evan, you're here.
Here.
And lurking in the cloud is our clerk reporting secretary, Michelle Martin. I am Chuck Anders' chair. I'm going to ask her secretary to read the notice of public hearing. Fred?
Yes. Legal notice, special town of Branford, a special legal notice, Town of Branford. Planning and zoning commission for the Town of Branford, Connecticut hereby gives notice of public hearing to be held on Wednesday, August 7, 2024 at 7:00 PM. By remote technology, consider the applications listed below. Information regarding how to participate in the public hearing will be provided on the commission's meeting agenda. That will be posted on the town's website at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Application number 24-7.3, special exception in coastal site plan for grading, section 6.8, located at 28 Kirkham Avenue, in parentheses, 0 Elm Street, Pent Road LLC, in care of Joe Lepri, applicant and owner. Application number 24-7.4, special exception for grading, section 6.8, associated with a proposed development, located at 1201 West Main Street, Faulkner Island Development LLC, applicant, Anthony J. LaSalle, trustee, owner. At said hearings, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies are on file in the Planning and Zoning Commission's office at the Planning and Zoning Department and 19 Main Street, Branford, Connecticut, 06405. Rate communications may be sent to the above address or to planningandzoningbranford ct.gov. Branford Planning and Zoning Commission, see Andre's chairperson.
Chuck Anders here. Thank you, Fred. We'll follow our normal format for public hearings, which is the applicant goes first, makes his presentation. After the application is done, we turn it over to the commission staff. Typically, we'll hear a staff report, summary of a staff report, open up for question or comments by commission members. After we complete that portion, we turn it over for public comment. We ask that you, I'm going to ask Evan in a moment to explain how you can participate as a member of the public when you get to the public portion. We ask that you identify yourself, name and address for the record, make your comments, and then after the public portion is done, we allow the applicant to respond to any public comments and turn it over for any further questions and comments from commission members. We may or may not close a public hearing depending on how it goes. So with that, I'm going to ask Evan to explain the process for participating in the public hearing. Evan?
Sure. Down at the bottom of your screen, there's a raise hand button. Please select this if you'd like to ask a comment or make or ask a question or make any comments. You can also type into the chat that you'd like to speak or wave your hand in front of the camera, and I'll try to catch you. If you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand, and we ask that everyone please state their name at the beginning of their comment or question.
Chuck Anders here. Thank you, Evan. We're going to be following our agenda. There are actually 10 items listed on our public hearings, so we're going to go sequentially. The first item is 23 North Main Street LLC, care of Dan Aimoano, applicant, owner. That's 23 North Main Street, a special exception for automobile washing and/or lubricating and detailing. And I understand that this application has been withdrawn. Is that correct, Harry and Evan?
That's correct. The applicant is going to be resubmitting and coming back with all three properties that their business operates on in one application.
Okay, thank you, Evan. I believe that was a staff recommendation. So then we'll proceed then to item number two and three. Both of those are Faulkner Island Development LLC, 1201 West Main Street, special exception coastal site plan, and also special exception for grading. This is a public hearing that we had opened at our last meeting. And I don't know if the applicant has additional information they'd like to present at this time, or what's the status for this one?
Harry Smith, town planner, since during this afternoon, the applicant sent an email essentially granting a time extension and requesting that they not present tonight and that the applications be continued to the 9/5 September 5th meeting of the commission. I believe the applicant is on the call for another application. I don't know if he wants to add anything.
No, I would just like to reiterate that we would like to request continuance to September to kind of work with town staff on some of the concerns for the project.
Chuck, Chuck, thank you, Mr. Hooly.
So we do elaborate. Number two, we do have a time extension for the special exception coastal site plan motor vehicle service, a special exception for grading. Public hearing is being opened tonight, so that can continue without a time extension to the 5th of September.
Okay. Okay, so if you're here on that, and I know that we've had a lot of public comments for our opening of the public hearing for those items, that we're continuing that to our September 5th. There's additional information that I believe the town engineer and there are some other issues that were being resolved. So that we'll hear that at our September 5th meeting, again, a Zoom meeting at September 7. So with that, yes, excuse me?
September 5th, Chuck, sorry.
September 5th, I'm sorry. Yes, September 5th. Thank you, Harry, for correcting that. So with that, then, was I will, if you can't make September 5th, let me just do this. Did someone, any member of the public wish to comment? Again, there's going to, I, we are continuing this. I think there's going to be additional information submitted, but if you can't make September 5th, does a member of the public wish to comment?
Sharon has raised her hand.
Sharon Smith Allen, 50 home place. I'm not sure if I'm going to be away that day, so I would just like to express my concern. I know the town hall, when I went to the town hall, they said there won't be any blasting. When Aldi's went in, they said there was, we spoke to the lawyer there. They said there was going to be minimal blasting, and it wasn't going to affect our area. And I have damage in my house because of the blasting, so I just am concerned if it goes forward, they're going to ask for a special exception to blast. And second concern is the driveway is going to be right on Main Street, or they call it West Main Street in the beginning of that part. That's right where everybody turns. And it's already a disaster in that area between the gas station, people turning from Route 1, and I don't see how there's going to be, it's going to be feasible to have an exit and entrance, even if you told the people they can only take a right instead of a left. People don't follow those directions, and so I think that it's going to be just a traffic nightmare. And so those are my two biggest concerns is traffic nightmare, accidents. There's way too much traffic in that area, and then also blasting.
Thank, thank you, Sharon. We had one other comment. We really, we're hoping not to have a whole lot of public comment, but again, if you want to say something briefly and again, maybe alert the applicant of things that need to be addressed in the next hearing, go ahead. But what do we got? Who else we got, Evan?
Annette C.
Good evening. My name is Annette Chouanyak. I live at 81 Main Street, Unit 41C here in Branford. I'm right next door to where this proposal is being made. I, I understand that I had said something before about the blasting and my concern about blasting. The thing is, it doesn't make any difference whether you're talking about blasting or heavy machinery. You're going to be talking about a lot of vibration to an area that is a lot of rock, and that travels. It's one of the things that I'm worried about, but aside from that, the points were already made about the traffic and the patterns there. Just ridiculous. I just don't understand it. And lastly, I'm just going to make this proposition. Just because something is zoned commercial doesn't mean that everything has to be commercial. In fact, I think it might behoove us to think in terms of boundaries, buffer zones, so that there isn't an influx of constant commercial construction and noise and crowding. So that's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak again or continuing this public hearing? I see one more. Evan?
Michael Conti.
Well, good evening. I'm Michael Conti. I live at 81 Main Street, Unit 48C. And I have to reiterate a few things that were already said by some people here and add a few things. First of all, I don't know what the definition of grading might be. I don't know what that entails. Number two, I'd like to know the distance between the properties. How much is going to be graded, which leaves the amount of trees between Rockledge and the new business. I'm concerned about the lighting. I'm concerned about the signage. And I also looked at the plans for the entrance and exits. Now, the entrance is coming by, and all of you from Branford, you come by Aldi's, you head toward the center of town, and you're supposed to pull into the right. And then when you leave, you're supposed to come out and then go back to the right, headed toward the center of town. That makes sense. However, what if you're coming from the center of town? There's no way, because the curve comes from Aldi's, and the plans show entrance from the Aldi side and exit toward the town side. So that to me doesn't make any sense at all, because that's going to cause a lot of issues. So those are my concerns. Also, you know, I really wish that, you know, they were able to have the meeting tonight, because there's a lot of people here who made plans to be here tonight, as the commissioners have. And to postpone it for another month, well, there's nothing I can do about that. However, there are people here who made plans to be here tonight to hear proposals, and now it's postponed again. So, but thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Conti. Who else?
Vi Gugliel. Yes, I, I'm Vi Gugliami. I live at 81 Main Street. I'm neighbors to Mr. Conti and Annette. And I spoke at the last meeting, and again, I just want to reiterate what they're saying. I don't need to repeat it, because that's what I was going to say about the entrance and them turning right. Right now, it's like a pretzel and people coming from Aldi's and even Walmart. They, you don't know whether you're going right or left. I had asked at the last meeting if there was going to be a traffic study done. I thought there was going to be a traffic study done. I just was wondering if that would be reported. That's what I was kind of hoping tonight's meeting would also have been held as long as the results. There was something about a wetlands meeting on July 18. Would that be spoken of as well? Now, that's postponed as well. All that information has to wait now until September. I mean, that is a holiday week for a lot of people. And it'll be a shame if people can't, can't be there. That's all I'm saying. Mr. Conti's correct. In his assessment as well, this is going to affect our community greatly, but everybody coming and going, which I stated at the last meeting, the traffic nightmare will continue. There's been accidents in front of our building, in front of our, in and out already. There are times we cannot get out of our our units here at Rockledge condominium, and the loss of privacy and noise and everything else that everyone mentioned can't be understated. Okay, so I thank you for your time, and I would just like to know about the traffic study and the wetlands as well. Is that going to be also held up now until the 5th?
Thank you, Ms. Gugliani. Harry and Evan, perhaps I, the applicant, we did request that the applicant provide an additional traffic study. There was a, some, a traffic report, I believe that the applicant submitted. There were some follow-up comments on that report by the town engineer, and I believe that's one of the reasons we're continuing, because there are, and actually raising some of the same issues that have been raised, particularly the left turn in and so forth. But if there is, how can the public get a copy of the materials that are submitted if they're interested? Harry and Evan?
Harry Smith, town planner, anyone can come to the office. We do have, I believe it's a four-page document called the Traffic Overview. And we have some correspondence back and forth between town staff and the applicants that contains some additional information. That's available here. We can make copies for people. We can try and post this on the town website, which would be under the Planning and Zoning Department section. If anyone has any questions, they can give a call into the office here. We probably won't have that up. We'll try and do it by Friday, but depends what goes on. Otherwise, you can call here at the office at 203-488-1255. That's 203-488-1255. It's Planning and Zoning Department line. And they can tell you whether it's up on town website. And the hours of the office here are 8 to 4:30, Monday through Friday. So if you can come into the office and get physical copies, you can do that. We'll try and get it on town's website so people can see it there as well.
Thank you, Harry. While we're at it, because we're continuing this public hearing, I would ask the applicant, I don't know if Mr. Hooly is listening. One question I had is, one of the main issues raised by the public and the staff and myself and others is the traffic again, coming off of the Route 146, the entrance. Again, both of the options to get into the site are problematic. Has there been any attempt to, I think you abut the, what we call the chase Aldi site, the land naturally abuts it, and that has a light that goes into it. It would be great, you know, to avoid a curb cut if there was some way that you could make arrangements with them, and I don't know if that's even feasible, but anyway, I'm curious about it. So that's something maybe you can address at the, at the next hearing. That would be, that would be helpful. So thank you, Mr. Hooly. Any other commission members that want to throw in anything to be addressed the next hearing that, you know, or gives an applicant any information? I know we've raised all this stuff. Staff has raised all this stuff, but if there's anything additional, we want to call to their attention. Any commission members? Okay, okay, hearing done then. We will continue these matters again as items two and three. This continues to our September 5th meeting. It's also Zoom meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you. So that brings us into item numbers four and five. The applicants in those cases are, in each case is Pent Road LLC. The address is 20 Kirkham Street, also 0 Elm Street. It's two special exception applications for two family dwellings. And I don't know if the applicant is ready to proceed with that one.
Yes.
Okay, you can proceed.
Hello, my name is Joe Lepri. I live at 14 Flat Rock Road here in Branford. I come before you now. I'm representing the property I own on 28 Kirkham Street. We went to ZBA to get clarification on the issue of using two structures on the site. ZBA regulations said we had to have one structure. We meet all the bulk requirements, and in my opinion, I, I would rather see two smaller structures than one large structure. I think that the two smaller structures match the surrounding area much better. And that was the clarification and the approvals we got from ZBA. We then went to Center of Town Review. We took their comments, and we went to a second meeting and we got approvals from, from Center of Town Review Board. As you could see, the site is in the back of 26 and 28 Kirkham Street. I'm going, I have a deeded right-of-way right now from 26 and 28 to allow this new driveway to be installed. As you could see at Kirkham Street, we currently have a 24-foot curb cut. However, what we'd like to do is shift the curb cut down slightly, headed towards 30 Kirkham. It allows better flow to come in, and it also allows us to, we're going to be removing 580 square feet of asphalt to kind of soften the approach coming in with some plants. Right now, it's paved right up to the house. So in order, in allowing us to shift it down, it allows us a couple of things. It lets us soften the approach. It's also going to let us parallel park two cars along that curb, which those will, will access 26. And what we'll do is we'll come down this roadway, the driveway here, which partially is already paved. Like I said, we're only moving four feet of the curb cut. One of the comments from the town engineer was the curb cut, and we will definitely be taking the curb cut out, obviously, and repouring it in concrete as per the engineering specs. The roadway will come down, and as you can see, there's an existing garage here. This existing garage will be removed. We're going to take care, to make sure that we do not disturb this. We have a 36-inch birch tree, which is a really nice tree. We have two on site. We have, well, we have two trees. This 36, and we have a very large maple. And it's one of the reasons why we're running the driveway the way we are, is to stay away from the roots of each one of these trees. So this garage will be removed. One of the questions from staff was stockpiling of material. This garage is set up like it was a two, two garages. It's a garage and a lean-to. So the plan right now is to take the lean-to part down, which is where the driveway will be. And any of our topsoil or any of our material that we're going to need to store on site will be stored right in that area. And we would leave half of this garage in place for construction until we're finished. And once, once the construction is completed, we'll take the rest of the garage down and the whole area, that whole area will become grass, topsoil and grass. One other comment from the town engineer was that we don't have a curb on the roadway. Right now, the water sheds off into the grassed area, and that's what I'd like to do, is to maintain that. A couple of reasons, like I said, we have that 36-inch birch, and we also are going to have a large grassed area. So, you know, it'd be nice to have the water shed off into that area. We are maintaining a 20-foot driveway that'll come down, and it'll feed into both of these houses. Each building will be 1,200 square feet. They're going to be built to FEMA regulations. As you could see, our proposed top of floor is 13.5. We meet all the requirements for the parking spots. One of the other comments from the engineer was the grading at the end of the parking lot to the Title Wetlands, and we meet the criteria, the slope. That was just one of the other comments we received. On the next page, Evan, if you could just go to the next page?
No, which one is that? Which one are you looking for, Joe?
Looking at the grading, the graining and drainage plan.
This one?
Yeah, that, that one. Thank you. As you can see, we had a storm tech system that was designed. We did the test pits. The test pit data is on the plan. Our proposal is we're going to curb this area in here to control this water where the two duplexes are. Everything will drain into the one catch basin, and the catch basin will then feed the cul-de-sac system. We have the control structures in place. Our downspout water will also be going through there. And then what we'll have is an overflow pipe that'll go into the biodetention basin, which will be in the back. The biodetention basin will have a level spreader at the end. We're trying to maintain that grade on the level spreader, because one of the, one of the things on this property is that there is a sewer manhole. You'll see it's right on the edge of our property where we meet the train station. And upon occasion, the sewer authority needs to come in and clean out that, that manhole. There is an access for them with an easement that goes through our property. However, their easement was cut off when they did the development for the train station. You'll see they have a bio pond at the end of the easement, which prevents the truck from coming down here. I've been in touch with the town engineer and a couple of people from WPCA, and I'm going to grant them right-of-way so that they can always access this through, and they'll have an area to park the truck where our, where our catch basin is, obviously. And then, like I said, we're maintaining somewhat of a level area so that they can access this sewer manhole at any time. One of the other things that was brought up was the construction entrance. Our construction entrance is going to come off of Elm Street. We have a 14-foot driveway that's already, it already has gravel on it, so it, it would make the perfect anti-track impad already. And that's, that's what our, that's what we plan on for a construction entrance. So our construction vehicles will not be coming in or exiting Kirkham. They'll be coming in through Elm and through this right-of-way. And then once the, once the project is close to completion, the existing garage, what was left of it, will be knocked down, and then this driveway will be finished and tied into Kirkham. I said, I tried to answer some of the comments from the town engineer. Unfortunately, our revised plans, we didn't get them there for him to review. One of his comments, and I believe we've covered all of them. I said, you can see where we had the Title Wetlands. We had the Title Wetlands flagged, as you can see on the plan, each one of our flaggings. And you can also see that both of our duplexes not only meet the bulk requirements, but they also set within the, the boundary of the setbacks. With that, I will turn it over to Harry.
Chuck Anders here. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lepri. I think, Evan, you did the staff report on this one?
That's correct. Yeah, sure. I think Joe covered most of the points in my staff report or any outstanding items. They got bearings from the ZBA on May 21st to allow two principal structures. They meet the bulk requirements as well as the off-street parking requirements. The submitted plans are submitted to the town engineer, whose comments were circulated with the staff report. A few outstanding items that may require some revisions to the site plans, so we're really just waiting on that. They satisfy the coastal site plan criteria as well as the special exception criteria. They appear before the Town Center Board on July 10. They appear before the town center board on July tenth. Uh, the board had uh some recommended, or they did recommend acceptance, and they also had some modifications that they would like to be introduced. They could work those into the conditions of approval. And staff recommends that the public hearing be continued to allow the additional information to be submitted by the applicant.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Evan. Um, any questions, comments from commission members before we open up to the public? Or staff? Hearing none, then let's open up, see if any member of the public wish to comment. Any member of the public wish to comment on these items? Evan, uh, remind us what they need to do?
Uh, sure. Down at the bottom of your screen is a raise hand button. You can also type in the chat that you'd like to participate. I do not see anyone.
Okay, okay. And Evan, you recommended, I know that we did get a letter from the town engineer, their number of items, and it sounded like they were in the process of being addressed. Um, so the recommendation is to continue this matter to our September fifth hearing. Is uh, Mr. Lepre, does that work for you?
Uh, yes, that'll be uh plenty of time. We're hoping to have those plans in in the next couple of days.
Okay, great. Okay, then, so uh absent any further comments by commission members or staff? Hearing none, then we'll continue items uh uh matters uh four and five to our September fifth Zoom meeting. Again, that starts at seven P M. So, thank you, Mr. Lepre. So that brings us then to uh items number six, seven, eight, and nine, which is the uh C P Branford LLC, Chair of Attorney John Nuff, the Stop and Stop Supermarket Company, AKA Twist Realty Inc. And this is a P D D master plan, P D D site plan, special exception for grading, and a three lot subdivision. Again, this is the regal site uh that we have opened the public hearing. We've had a uh to continuation of the public hearing that we opened, I believe, in our last meeting and made a few comments. And uh, Mr. uh Nuff, are you ready to proceed?
We are ready, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Nuff with an address of one thirty five Broad Street in Milford, Connecticut. Here on tonight on behalf of the applicants. Uh, as you know, Mr. Chairman, we are here with you last month. Uh, we received um, ever since I know you were very busy that night and I but I think in general, the um comments fell into three different categories from each of the commission members. One is density, two is the design and architecture, three is the circulation. We have provided, as I think we tried, really tried to do in earnest for the past fifteen months or so, respond to the commission and the staff in a very meaningful way. I noted in my memo that, you know, you know, we view this as a collaboration between the commission and the town and staff and us. And I think we've taken that very seriously. And the things that we submitted last Friday, which was in your packet and delivered to you last Friday, is further demonstration of that. And just for the record, what we submitted last week, a memo from me dated August second regard to uh primarily the density question as well as the subdivision comments. Uh, Ray Sullivan submitted a memo as well as regards to architecture and renderings. Uh, we submitted revised site plans from John Smith and V L companies that uh dramatically improved the circulation. I mean, by the way, parenthetically, uh, Harry was kind of to make time for John Mantini and I to meet with him. Uh, literally, um, made changes to the site plan with regard to circulation. Harry has some other ideas and we incorporated those to the to the maximum extent possible. So, we, as I said, you know, this is all as as a way of indicating, you know, how earnestly we are trying to respond to uh both Harry's comments as well as submissions. Um, in addition to those revised plans, we have response to the town engineer um memo. We have response to the S L R traffic memo. We have provided a um exhibit with regard to demonstrating that both the propping line and the self-storage building exceeds the five thousand foot requirements, um, that is with coordinates. So we can't get any more specific or give you any better uh verification than that. Um, I would note that we received our inland wetland approval um a week or so ago. And the revised plans that you have incorporated all the changes, but and and they're minor, frankly. Uh, all the changes that um were included in that wetland set. So, um, I'm not gonna give you the longer list of all the things that we've done to date. I think you know all that. Um, what I wanna do is is respond briefly to the uh density question or density comments. Last time, and then let Ray Sullivan walk you through the um the the changes to architecture, give you a little bit more about, you know, how he's trying to create a community feel on behalf of his clients. And then I have John Smith walk you through the changes to the circulation, which I think are dramatic. Um, I don't think we need uh to hear specifically from Chris Mitchellick, who is our uh architect on self-storage building, Dutch Wheeler, who is landscape arch- architect, Mike Kirkker, who is our traffic engineer. They're all here, happy answering questions, but the presentation is gonna be primarily me, Ray, and John Smith. So just with regard to density, and I know that we spent some time in this, but this is, this is an indication, a good example of the way in which we try to respond to the town's comments and requests. We were asked to provide greater density. And we were asked to respond to or utilize the standards in the I H O D regulation. And we did that. We are providing twenty percent portable units. The I H O D allows you to calculate density at twenty units per acre for the entire of the site. We are at fifteen and a half units per acre of this. So, as I said, there's only so much we can do with regarding to destiny. There is a trade-off with when, when you have a greater percentage of affordable, you're going to have a greater destiny. That is exactly what the I H O D regulation recognized. And in our case, we are significantly below the twenty units per acre. Um, I'm happy to discuss that further, but I think we wanna get to some of the other good things that have changed since we were here before you last time. And so I wanna turn over Ray Sullivan to talk about the architecture, your comments that um after sort of more residential and feel, a better distinction between the residential architecture uh and the self-storage building. And I think uh Ray has accomplished that. And I hope you've all had a chance to take a look at his memo as well as uh the revised renderings. That'll turn over to Ray.
Thanks, John. Uh, good evening. This is Ray Sullivan from the Sullivan Architectural Group. We're at one twenty nine Broad Street in Milford. So if I can share the screen. Hopefully, everybody can see that.
We got it, Ray.
So, um, so this first image is um, it's, it's just a a small snapshot. It's the uh uh one of the previous site plans uh and the current site plan. And so with the redesign of the site plan, you know, we feel that we've created a a much softer site plan. Um, you know, you could see that 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 so much of the residential building, you know, kind of borders and looks out over a very large parking area. Um, and 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 we had some of the commercial traffic, you know, that would be kind of queuing up, you know, right by you know, the end of the residential buildings and and and, you know, and that, you know, that would happen at at off-hours and and and, you know, that wasn't a great effect. Um, and, you know, we do have this large parking lot in here and the in in the building in front. We didn't get a chance really to shield much of that parking field, you know, from the street or create much streetfront activity, you know, other, other than cars and in, you know, in queuing. So, um, so I, I, you know, I think we've got a, a much softer site plan here. Um, you know, you know, first of all, we, you know, we get a a a building on the street that's got more presence. I think it's uh aesthetically more pleasing and consistent with the rest of the buildings. It's also long enough, uh, and I'll show you some views that that it really shields, you know, the, you know, the, the, the parking that that is behind. Um, uh, as we arrange the buildings, you know, we arranged it around what is almost a a half acre of green space, you know, nice exterior amenity space, you know, ad- adjoining to units. Now, you know, for instance, if I could have, I would have taken building five and slid it down to be centered here, but but, you know, the, the, the other thing that happened is that as opposed to this large parking field, um, when we broke up the, the, the residential building into four, we're actually able to spread out and disperse the parking. So actually, the length of travel from various parking spaces is actually shorter, you know, in this more dispersed layout than 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 it is in this larger, more concentrated layout. So, I'm just gonna The second image is 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 a blow up of that, you know, approximately, you know, uh, half an acre of of kind of green space here that that that, you know, is bordered by three of the buildings. And, you know, you know, I I guess my, my kind of overall statement of this is that that we, here we, I think we've achieved a proportionate mix of soft and hardscape that supports an active uh outdoor activity while maintaining landscaping lawn areas. So, uh, you know, you know, we've got, we've got nice walkways and 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 almost nothing is a straight line. You know, we've got areas for people to gather, whether or not they're, they're, they're hardscape areas uh around fire pits or 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 softer land uh lawn areas. We've got grill stations, we've got trellis, you know, with some dining areas. And and we, we were careful not to make too much of this because we also wanted enough, you know, you know, landscape and soft area so that it would keep the noise down uh and uh, you know, and 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 enhance the, the, the view from, from all the residents. And and I think we've got some, some views to to follow that will show that. Uh, we do have a tot lot, which is, you know, if you go just down this sidewalk right here, the tot lot is at the end. It's a small pot lot area, you know, um, and it's something that the client feels very comfortable with. He's got another project in Branford. You know, he built a larger tot lot that that gets very, very little use. And um, so it it made sense to provide a tot lot, but but, you know, uh, you know, not too large. But but we've got it kind of at the end where where some of these areas, you know, might be a little quiet conversation. Maybe it could get a little louder in the tot lot area. And the tot lot area actually has a lot of lawn area. So if kids wanted to play ball or whatnot, you know, it's, it's uh, you know, it's maybe a more appropriate place for that. Uh, we've got a few views, um, you know, of that, that amenity area. And uh, this, this view uh here is looking uh east. And and I think, you know, one thing it says right off the top is, is even though that exterior amenity area is not that large, you know, it's not two acres of land, but I think the mix between the three-story buildings and the irregular shape of the hard and soft scape, I think we create a, you know, a, you know, a real uh, you know, a- almost like a cozy presence out here that is very, very livable, very, very walkable. Um, and creates good views, you know, from, you know, within the units. Um, uh, I'll, I'll talk about the architecture, uh, you know, a little bit in in a minute, but but, you know, you know, here we are picking up the uh uh, you know, the comments from the commission and 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 making the buildings look more traditional in nature. Uh, you know, this, this looks out towards ninety five is behind those trees, you know. So from that circle where you first entered that, that uh outdoor amenity area, we're looking out towards the grill stations and the uh uh the the dining area underneath the trellis. But 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 you will notice that that there's very ample, you know, green space all around. So we wanna create that good proportionate mix of of hard and soft area. Uh, when we, when we turn to the far end and look west on the, on, on the view, again, these are some of these sitting areas, you know, you know, around the fire pits. Uh, one thing this does pick up, uh, again, on the architectural side is on the previous design, you know, we had overhangs over the front doors uh to all the buildings, but but, you know, the more contemporary expression of that is that we had cable supports. You know, so they're, they're, they're hung kind of off the building. And and we thought in a more traditional fashion, we'd provide some more trim and 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 put them down on columns, which we thought, you know, created the much more, you know, traditional look. So this is a, this is a partial view of the front building. So, you know, in 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 essence, again, we created, uh, you know, we transitioned from that, that more contemporary to a softer, traditional look. Uh, you know, this is only a little bit more than half the building, but then, then you see the next building beyond. Uh, and and and, you know, you you'll see here, you, 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 you actually, if you're out on the street, there's very little view back to the interior. So we're really, you know, creating a presence on the street and and think that we are shielding, you know, the parking and some of the asphalt, you know, behind. Uh, and to to also create a, you know, more of a presence on the street, you know, you know, we've got commercial spaces over here with you know, with with large windows. Um, these two spaces uh uh behind here are actually amenity spaces, fitness center and rec area for the, for the residents, and we've created this really nice uh terrace area that is out on the road. So I, you know, I, I think that, that we kind of softened the the front that faces the street. We've created street front activity, you know, you know, with this plaza. Um, and I think we've created a, 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 a good visual barrier, which was once uh viewing towards a lot of uh traffic movement, you know, parking and asphalt. And scrolling down to the last view is, so the, the upper view, um, is, you know, the, the reality is the materials didn't change very much. It, it was just a contemporary expression. You know, uh, you know, using the same material. So, so instead of, uh, I've, I've got this uh broken down in the uh, in the memo, instead of this uh, this, this gray, this darker gray material, we've got the softer red. You know, it, you know, instead of, you know, a, a, you know, a, a white siding as an accent, where you've got that dark and white contrast. You know, we've used kind of a, a, you know, a beige taupe color, uh, which blends more with the softer red brick. So, so it's, it's a color palette is similar as opposed to, you know, more stark in the contemporary one. Uh, the more contemporary one had these big, heavy parapets, you know, you could zoom in, but they, you know, they're, 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 they're big and heavy. You know, we've pulled these back. Um, the, the parapets in the contemporary one had very little trim, so, but we've added more traditional trims on this. You know, this one, you can't see very well, but it was really flat, so we pulled that out a little bit. So it's, it's just a, you know, a, a development of some of the more traditional details that we're trying to, you know, in, you know, in enhance and bring this from that contemporary feel to a more, you know, traditional feel. Um, the, you know, th- this, this one had these aluminum sun shades, you know, that, you know, they're now go- gone. Uh, you know, this was a, a, a bracketed overhang and 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 now the, the overhang is, is post-supported. Um, uh, the, in both ca- both cases, the windows were double hung, but we've add- added a little bit more moldy treatment here. So, uh, you know, I, I, I think in general, you know, it's, it's funny that, that the, the actual materials did not change significantly, but it's the color tone and the detail that did that I think drastically changed the look and the feel of the building, uh, which we're reading from the commission, uh, which was, uh, you know, where, where we, where you thought that, that we'd be better positioned at. So I, I, you know, you know, hopefully, you know, you feel the same as, as, as we do, that, that we've achieved a you know, kind of a, you know, a much softer and 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 more traditional feel, uh, you know, in the design. So, uh, John, that, I'll, I'll conclude with that unless there are some questions.
Thank you, thanks, Ray. And and I'll leave it to you, Mr. Chairman, if you wanna people ask Ray questions now or continue on with John Schmitz and detailing the changes to the uh um, the sidewalk and the uh circulation pattern.
Uh, Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Nuff. Why don't you just continue the presentation and then we'll open it up, you know, when you're done, we'll, we'll go through.
Next is John Schmitz from B L.
Hi, good evening. Uh, again, just for the record, my name is John Schmitz. I'm a civil engineer, project manager with B L Companies, three fifty five uh Research Parkway, Maryland, Connecticut. Um, Ray, if you could stop sharing, I'm gonna share uh our site plan and walk the commission and everyone through the um, the latest site plan.
Yeah, I'm trying to stop sharing, but the, 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 the image changed, so let me see if I can get the same image back. I don't know, is it possible for the?
I can. I might be able to stop it here. Let me see if I can do that.
Who's sharing their screen right now?
Uh, Ray, um, Sullivan is. Oh, great.
There it goes.
Okay, so let, let me see if I can share screen now.
Oh, wait, I, I get it. I get it. Okay.
There we go. Okay, so you, you should all be seeing the um the current site plan. Uh, this is a rendering of the uh, the revised plan. Uh, again, very similar to what you saw last time. Um, as Attorney Nuff mentioned, um, there was a meeting a couple of weeks ago between Attorney Nuff, B L staff and Harry Smith. And um, the discussion revolved around how to uh improve the circulation. And, um, the discussion revolved around how to, uh, improve the circulation, uh, both from a pedestrian standpoint, uh, as well as from a vehicular standpoint, and that really what, um, what I'm gonna discuss, the the changes that were made. So from a pedestrian standpoint, we're asked to try to provide, uh, better pedestrian circulation, not only from the parking area to the residential buildings, but also between the residential buildings, uh, and the Walgreen Building, which again, uh, for the for, uh, information is down here on the the lower left. Uh, we always had a sidewalk to that Walgreens building, but the sidewalk kinda took a little more circuitous route ups towards, uh, towards Route One into the, uh, mixed-use commercial building. Uh, what we did was add a newer sidewalk, uh, along the right side of the driveway, so that sidewalk would, um, um, be closer to the storage building. There would be a new crosswalk at this location and then, uh, tying into the proposed sidewalk here to provide, um, some additional, uh, um, walking space to get to Walgreens in a in a shorter route. Uh, I also note there's also sidewalks around the, uh, the current theater building, which obviously is gonna be changed into the storage building. And, um, those sidewalks will be staying as well. Additionally, on the right side of the plan, um, this is where the changes to the parking, uh, really, really took took change. So, um, and you know, the red dashed line I have here, this is the, um, the restriction line where we're not allowed to build any, um, buildings beyond that line. Um, we do have parking here, and what we've done is reconfigure that parking. Uh, you'll note that we've added sidewalks along the perimeter, uh, which is, uh, adjacent to the existing limits of disturbance. So we have a sidewalk along, um, this location, all along the perimeter here, um, as well as we created a new, uh, interior triangular island with, uh, sidewalks around there. You notice some additional crosswalks here, again, to get back to the buildings. Uh, we added another new sidewalk along the, um, the south side of the storage building, again, uh, a- adjacent to these parking spaces, uh, again, with a crosswalk to get up to these buildings. So, uh, so we've added quite a bit of new sidewalks to get to the buildings. Um, this parking has been reconfigured. We did, uh, maintain the, uh, previous, um, connection point here, which was an emergency access requested by the, um, fire department. So it would be like a a grass crete type, um, surface with a fence on it. So the fire department, um, if need be, could, um, get through there, um, and get down into this area. One of the other changes we made in addition to these, uh, parking revisions were also to shift the dumpsters, uh, there at this location here. Previously, the dumpsters were located a little further away here, and it was requested that we we find a better location that was more convenient for for residents. Again, we have, we have dumpsters here at the, uh, left-hand side, closer to the, um, uh, Route One side. And then also dumpsters, um, here at the right-hand side, um, that were that were shifted closer to the building. Again, um, sidewalks provide easy accessibility to those, um, to those dumpsters. Um, and obviously, by moving islands around, we moved curbing, um, those led to minor revisions for, um, for grading, uh, moving some catch basins around, we did revise the stormwater report and the collection system design, um, as required in order to accommodate the 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 revisions. Um, of course, you know, trees had to shift around, light poles had to shift around, those were all plans that were revised and resubmitted with the, um, uh, with revised plans that went in last week. And, um, just briefly, one of the other things I'll I'll share is, I know Attorney Nuff had mentioned the, um, the plan, that's your agenda, see if I can get this. Let's see. That's the old plan, and just a sec. Let's see if I can move this down a little bit. There we go. So what I'm gonna share is the, um, this is one of the exhibits we provided, we were asked to, um, verify a more accurate method, the distance between storage, um, storage units, um, existing storage units in ours. And what we did was we looked at it from two different methods. We looked at the distance, because the regulations mention the distance between facilities, um, so there's a little little vague of how that's measured between facilities. So we, we took a look at it, um, from two ways, um, one was based on property line to property line, and one was from a- actual physical building to physical building. Um, and from the, uh, the lockup storage facility on Route One to our, uh, to our east, we are approximately, uh, five thousand two hundred thirty-one feet from property line to property line. That is for the new subdivided parcel for the, uh, proposed storage use. And then building to building, uh, their existing buildings, so we can measure those very accurately, uh, five thousand five hundred eighteen feet. Uh, we also provide coordinates, these are Connecticut State Plane Coordinates, they're accurate to, uh, to within one foot. And then we also looked at another storage facility that's, um, uh, further to the northeast, uh, just off Fleet's Island Road, behind, uh, Chatterpot, um, former Chatterpot. And those distances, again, property line to property line in a straight line, uh, five thousand three hundred thirty-four feet, and then building to building, uh, five thousand four hundred and eleven feet. So I just wanted to, uh, to point that exhibit out. And, um, that kinda is a brief description of the, um, not only the changes to the plan, but also the exhibit. And I'd be happy to answer any questions when, uh, when we're ready. And I'm gonna stop sharing at this point.
Thank you. Thanks, John. So just a few other sort of, not quite housekeeping, but other sort sort of things that, uh, I wanna make clear. Um, we will be back before the WPCA on August thirteenth. We are very confident that that would be approved, that our old plan with a number of units was approved, uh, and, uh, so we're confident that we'll we'll get approval for the revised number of residential units. Uh, we have agreed in the past, and I just wanna say it again for the record, that we will provide a declaration of easement, which is a very commonplace document where you have, uh, various parcels that are sharing the same facilities, whether it's parking, utilities, drainage, and so we'll, we'll supply that, uh, as a condition of approval. Uh, we have told you on multiple occasions that we are happy to comply with five point seven point B, which is found in your IHOV regulations. I've addressed all of, uh, Harry's subdivision comments in my memo, um, but I think that's all we have. See that Mr. Russo is here, I assume you've been talking about traffic and Mike Kirk, Kirk can respond to him. But the full team is here and we're happy to engage in further discussion with the commission.
Chuck, industry, thank you, Mr. Nuff. Um, at this point, we'll turn it to Harry, I know you just got, I mean, the materials came in on Friday. Um, I I, do you, do you have, uh, comments, um, uh, about the additions and changes and so forth?
Uh, Harry Smith Town Planner, I do in general, um, I have not been able to complete, uh, review, of course, uh, since Friday's submission of the revised plans. Um, that also goes for the town engineer who's let me know that, uh, he was also unable in a short timeframe to provide, uh, responses to, uh, additional information submitted. That being said, I I do wanna commend the applicant team for coming in. Um, I think the site layout addresses the vast majority of the comments I raised. Um, I understand some things are potentially not possible to be addressed, or there are constraints on, uh, them being addressed. But in general, um, I think this really goes a major way towards addressing some of the concerns that have been on the table here about, um, um, ease of pedestrian movement, um, um, parking space proximity to the units a little, I mean, one thing I think was not mentioned was the, and I don't know if you could, um, I could put the plan up myself, I suppose, maybe I'll do that. I apologize, just gotta cue the plan up here so I can sort of speak from that, um, bit. I don't think mine are colored as nicely as the applicant team's versions, but, um, okay, everybody should be able to see the site plan hopefully in a second. There it should be. So people can see that now?
Yes.
Great, okay. Um, one thing that I think was really emphasized possibly is it was parking down in this neck of the woods, if you will, has been sort of shifted up. So there's been a, a piece of parking added here, um, in an attempt to bring it closer to the residential units. Um, I think the addition of, uh, a bus stop seating area, I'm not sure that was noted or not, I might have missed that if was, but it has been added over here near the bus stop. Um, so there's been a lot of, um, I think, effort to, um, explain more fully the amenities being provided and add a few more things into that mix. Um, in terms of a couple of specifics, um, I think as far as I understand, the dumpster location for the residents are here and here, as was noted by, uh, the applicant's team. I don't know whether that, I think, is that a dumpster location for this building?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you've got the three, and I'm not, uh, aware myself of what the standards might be for the amount of dumpsters and recycling containers and so forth for a hundred seventy-two dwelling units. Uh, but I would ask the applicant directly, um, I think some more information is needed to make sure that's sufficient. Um, so I don't know what those standards might be, but, um, whether he's gonna be supplemented, i- you know, inside the building units in some way I'm unaware of, um, if that's necessary. Um, so I think that's still on the table as undressed. Again, I have not gone through all this, so I certainly haven't looked at lighting, landscaping, all those kinds of things in detail in terms of how they might have been altered by this new design. Um, I think the applicant's team covered the sewer, that there will be, uh, they'll be going to the meeting of WPCA just to make sure there was a sewer capacity study, in my understanding of the results of that, there was that, uh, it identified, uh, that there was sufficient capacity for this development, um, but that process, um, is gonna be concluded hopefully with the WPCA meeting on the thirteenth. Um, I think I will stop there and, um, turn it over to Mr. Russo, our peer review consultant. I don't think you got a chance at last meeting to really go over comments, and I know there's been a little bit of, of, uh, of, uh, uh, communication back and forth with the applicant's, uh, traffic engineering team. So let me stop sharing here for a minute and turn it over to Mr. Russo, if you have any comments.
Uh, good evening, can you hear me good?
Yes, we can.
Great, uh, Anthony Russo with SLR International, uh, out of New Haven, Connecticut, uh, traffic consultant, uh, for the talent on this proposed project. So we have reviewed two traffic studies so far from the applicant. Uh, the first one, um, which does not reflect the current site plan, um, we reviewed that, um, made comments, um, and then, um, they submitted a revised traffic study, which we reviewed. Um, they also submitted a, uh, response to comment memo, which shows how they responded to all of our comments in the revised traffic study. So for the most part, uh, BL Companies has, um, adequately responded to our comments. Just a few things to go over, some bookkeeping things and some things for the, uh, town, uh, to consider. Uh, one thing is we could not verify the scene analysis, you know, had been done accurately because we just were missing some timing information. That timing information, uh, for the traffic signals in the study area was supplied to me yesterday from, uh, the town. Um, we looked at it today, um, and we concluded that the modeling and the capacity analysis and the signal timings are all done correctly and that the results presented in the study are are correct. So we can close that loop. Um, the one comment that we made was we wanted to know more about construction traffic. Um, the applicant, uh, responded, uh, that there would be approximately thirty to forty workers on site at any given time from seven AM to four PM. Um, that was one, uh, response, we're looking for a little bit more context, a little bit more information. Um, how many trucks, um, the length of the construction period and, um, weekday, weekend activity. And also, you know, I'm sure on that one of the site plans, it will show a tracking pad or a wheel washing station. So during construction, as trucks leave and then, uh, leave the site, they don't track dirt and debris onto the public roadways. So we're looking for a little bit more description of the construction, traffic and activities, not an analysis, just more information from a qualitative standpoint. Um, the other thing is two things for the town to consider. Um, as you travel, um, on Route One towards the I ninety-five ramps going east and you're in that lane that is adjacent to the, uh, double yellow. When you go straight, you know, it's a through lane, and as you go over to the, uh, you know, southbound ramps, you automatically get into that left turn lane. So if you're, you know, we were thinking that, uh, for some motorists in the area, you know, um, that that presents a problem. Because, you know, as you proceed through the through lane, all of a sudden you end up in a left lane. If you don't wanna turn left, then you gotta quickly get out of it. So one thing is for maybe the town to, uh, contact Connecticut DOT to see if they wanna install a sign just east of the I ninety-five ramps to provide notice of the, uh, lane designations. So motorists are aware of that situation, so they don't end up in the left turn lane. They know that they need to get over if they don't wanna make a left turn onto the southbound ninety-five ra- uh, ramp. The other, there are some locations, um, where the movements, where the queue exceeds the storage capacity. So there's some queuing issues. These issues exist regardless of whether the project is constructed or not. The queuing, um, where it exceeds capacity, that occurs in the existing condition, you know, build condition and the build condition. Um, the other thing the town could consider along with requesting that sign that I mentioned earlier is to, uh, contact Connecticut DOT to see if they can make some kind of adjustments to the phasing or timing to, um, improve the queuing at certain movements, um, within a study area. Again, the applicant doesn't, you know, in my opinion, in our review, does not cause a impact requiring them to do, uh, any mitigation. They don't really degrade level of service, they don't significantly incre- increase queue, but they did acknowledge that there is an existing queue problem, um, and this is something that the town could bring to Connecticut DOT's attention. And perhaps they can come up with some, um, improvements, so the queue, uh, the queue is not as 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 bad as it is, uh, today where it exceeds the storage capacity. The other thing is, um, to consider is the Institute of Transportation Engineers has a shared, uh, parking analysis. So you have a mixed-use project here, you have different land uses. The, uh, parking, uh, peak parking demand, it varies, um, from use to use, they don't occur at the same time of the day. So sometimes when you use the ITE shared parking methodology, you will show that maybe you don't need as much parking as shown on the plan or as required by a municipality. So it's something for the town to consider to maybe ask the applicant to do, to see how many parking spaces that they get, looking at the shared parking analysis for a mixed-use project. If it shows less parking, um, the town is open to that, then that might provide an opportunity for less impervious surface and maybe an opportunity to provide more landscaping. Um, so that's one thing, another thing for the town to consider. During the first public hearing, there was mention of summer traffic conditions that in this area, um, they could even be worse than what was reflected in the traffic study. Um, so met we had mentioned to the applicant, maybe do a qua- a qualitative assessment of what summer conditions are, you know, utilizing Connecticut DOT or other counts to make adjustments and just qualitative document what summer conditions look like. Um, and again, that could be part of the letter. Um and again, that could be part of the letter given to Connecticut D O T to say, listen, here's conditions and queuing issues during non-summer months. Here is during summer months where they might be worse at times as people come off on N D five onto U S Route one. And again, maybe this is something you could consider when you um take a look at the uh project and maybe make adjustments to your traffic signals to improve queuing. Um and the final item was, we asked for information from the applicant on a fatality an accident that occurred at U S Route one in Windsor Hill Road intersection where a pedestrian uh was hit crossing from the north side to the south side of the street. They did provide that information in more detail. It appeared at that time that there was no crosswalk. Um from what I can see from the latest aerial, there now appears to be a crosswalk. So I think that um that issue has been addressed um and the crosswalk presence um obviously is very helpful. So that's kind of a summary of um the traffic review. And as I said, the um, you know, the town uh however they wanna proceed, it's up to them and the commission and the staff uh putting together a letter to Connecticut D O T to bring some signage issues, some queuing issues to their attention based on this study and see how they respond um and they may respond in a positive way that is helpful uh for traffic flow and safety in the area. So thank you.
Chuck Kean, just here, thank you, Mister Russo. Harry, did you have anything else before we uh turn it over to commission members for comments? Harry, it looks like you're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, yeah, a couple more small items um. Well, or not, uh the self-storage uh graphic that was put up, which I think I can probably bring up myself here. I'll share my screen one more time. So I I just very clearly uh demonstrated that the measurements were from building to building as well as from property to property owner. Um on the site of the proposed development, that property line is of course the new property that will be s- uh sliced off just for the self-storage building, not the entire property line of the project, so I'm curious if you did use the property line of the entire application subject to commission in the property line right now. Uh would you be compliant with the five thousand feet? I'm not saying one's more valid than the other. Um you know, eventually that will be the property of the self-storage facility. Um but I'm just curious whether the compliance is reliant upon uh measurements being taken from the new property line.
It is, yes, it is, yes.
Okay, so this through through uh excess of three hundred thirty-four feet. Um so the distance across from the property line across the park you want now for the old cinema is um is less than that.
Okay, and and as Josh Smith indicated, what the regulations say is facility to facility.
No, I understand that, yeah. I'm just asking the question because I know. Um it it might be helpful to demonstrate you comply either way, that's if you do, it's up to you, you know. Um cuz I there has been a member of the public uh who has questioned that extensively. Um and I think uh that person could not make tonight's meeting and I just put their email up here just so it's in front of the commission, I think it was sent to the commission directly. Um and I'll make sure that has been done, but I just wanted to put this up here. Not, you know, he's saying you not provide the documentation which you've just provided um. And everyone can read this, just leave it up for a couple minutes. So as staff, we will of course, you know, let this person know the documentation is here and uh they can come in and take a look at it. And there is more information here that goes on several pages, so I will send this to the commission. Um it is here, any member of the public wishes to see it. I think some of this goes back quite a ways um to uh even conceptual discussion of the application last year. But I think it's more the the same issue of questioning the uh whether separation distance is met. Uh and provides his own measurements or assumptions or whatever. So there is that document and that leads me to the uh only rainy question I've got, which is um we have the um the meeting of the W P C A and getting the results of that meeting into the record. We've got probably additional comments from myself for a complete uh detailed review of the plans as well as the town engineer. I'm certainly not recommending if even the uh public hearing was closed tonight, I don't have any recommendation regarding action by the commission uh at this point. And I don't know whether the applicant wants to try and continue the hearings um to the fifth, or you want to let them be closed tonight, I think. One application, let's take a look, I think all of them actually opened. So they would all need time extension if you wanted to continue them to the fifth, I believe. Yeah, that's correct, so I'll just throw that out there as an open question. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Um Mister Nuff, I don't know if you wanna respond to the extension, the public hearing continuation, or you wanna hear from commission members first?
Uh I think I think it makes sense to hear from the commission frankly.
Okay, um let's go through, uh let's uh see commission members have some comments, let's go around the table. Metaphorically, so to say, uh Mister Chadwick, uh Joe, you're you're the top name on my list, so you always calling you first.
Okay, um I I I am encouraged by the massing, I'm encouraged by the displacement of the buildings with with respect to each other. Um I I I think having reduced the sea of parking into the clusters is a very big improvement. Um I I'll be interested to see what happens in 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 the sort of little spaces between the parking. Um I I think there's a lot of opportunities there. Uh the the extent to which the the former theater building is a background building. Um I I don't know if that's ever been been sort of looked at or 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 thought about, but it's 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 sort of not necessarily a set piece with respect to the um overall planning of the of the residential units nor should it be. Um but it's it's, you know, a big hunk of something that's there. And it's 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 never really, you know, been discussed in terms of the overall design except something to be walked around. And and maybe that maybe that's fine, but in in general, I am, I am, you know, positively encouraged. Um the last time we spoke about this was quite late in the evening, I don't think I really had my thoughts gathered um as as coherently as I might have liked. Um but with respect to density, um if there's any place in town or any project, I think that um where excess density or increased density could be considered. Um I would have to say this would be it, I mean, this is a virtually contextless site and the impact of density would be I mean totally negligible or imperceivable from the street. So if if there is any um concessions to be made by um the commission to the applicant for increasing density, um I for one would be willing to entertain um something like that if it helps the ratio of affordable units.
Chuck Kean, just here, thank you, Joe.
Yes, um Chuck, I I would first like to make one clarification, uh just that um Mister Anthony Russo and I do share the same surname, but we are in no way related, I've never met him, the man before, the gentleman before. And I just wanna make sure that there no one would think that there was some kind of connection between myself as a commissioner and Mister Russo who gave this report.
That is correct, sir.
Yes, uh one day maybe we will meet, but but not tonight. Anyway, I I was uh actually very happy to see uh once again, that each time the commissioner has asked the uh applicant to take a deeper look at what was being presented, I I think they did that with great honesty and and in a very earnest way. And uh I was one of the people, I think one of the commissioners who raised the issue about just the style of the buildings. And I'm glad they addressed it, um they did, they they made changes that just softened the appearance, I I I I I'm a very, very, very traditional guy, so I love clapboard and 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 peaks and gables and stuff, but I I'm willing to realize that there's no perfect plan for any piece of property, that sometimes you have to make certain concessions because there are other greater values to what's being presented and, you know, one of the things that I do like is the fact that the applicant is willing to uh go, you know, uh have twenty percent uh for my housing, which I think is an issue that we we're always concerned about, so I and I I see there's a lot more green. I think they made provisions for um your tenants to have a picnic, I don't see that very often, that kind of green space. And I, you know, in a lot of ways, I think it's a tough spot to develop and and uh I mean, having a bigger building in the front blocking parking in the rear and then having green in the back, I think they're all good positive steps in in um uh this development and so um uh you know, I as I said, I don't think any plan is always gonna be perfect, and I don't think it's gonna will be satisfied every single thing, but if I had it, you know, look at it as an overall plan, there's no question that I would uh be in favor of it.
Chuck Kean, just here, thank you, Fred. Joe Ayuso?
Yeah, this um first of all, I'd like to commend the the applicant for making uh the changes that they made, at least in the architecture and all that. Unlike Joe uh Chadwick, I I I have issues with the with the the density. And I have issues with how the density was uh computed, in my opinion. Uh this is, this is a site that has already been developed with a with the Walgreens uh building, plus the large building of the the theater and they um I guess and the driveway and and the roadway that goes behind it, basically behind there to get to the to the site. Basically, you're developing the parking lot. In my opinion, just looking at the site, just roughly fifty percent or more or less of this site, it's already been developed by these uh two large buildings. So, but yet they're computing that land as part of per acre density, and I I think you the density should be computed on what they're developing, which is the parking lot. And uh which lowers that density quite a bit. And I'm I'm looking at other situations with these P D Ds that come up come before us that they slap as much density as they can on the uh and it's not just uh this applicant, other applicants, and see what sticks. And because uh they figure they they over over does make it overcrowded and they take a little bit away and they still get what they want. But I do commend the the applicant for trying to ma- make as many improvements as possible. My my opinion is that one building should be omitted and and make this place and spread those other buildings out and and give the people that are that are there uh more uh more space uh outside sto- space. And I also think that uh by lowering the density but also uh improve the the aesthetics of the 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 whole thing, but and my my concern is 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 these P D Ds are getting getting a little bit out of hand with the with density, but I do commend what what they did in making improvements and uh so if if it's agreed upon that this this is okay, then then it is, I'm not gonna, I'm just giving you my my personal opinion. That'll be all.
Chuck Kean, just here, thank you, Joe. Marcy, um I know you weren't at the last hearing, uh.
I'm caught up, I've been following it closely. I I certainly appreciate uh Joe Ayuso's concern about density, I've been thinking about density in broader terms, which I think we should address as a commission overall on a broader scale. But you know, and I do look and listen to the narrative about, you know, getting the affordable housing and and the push and pull between increasing density and what we have on the site, I I do feel like they've achieved a respectable balance. Um one of the things that it was a little new for me tonight to consider was, you know, when you think about the intermittent parking options, um you know, I I don't know of anything and obviously you need somebody who wants to do something other than storage in the movie theater, but I don't know of any other uses that would work in the old theater building and I certainly, you know, appreciate the adaptive reuse of the theater building, even though it may be, you know, four thousand eight hundred and ninety-five feet instead of five thousand, depending on which way the crow is flying or driving or however, you know, I think it's, you know, it's reasonably separate, um you know, if there's demand for the use, I think that's great if, you know, I know there's been lots of conversations to have other uses in there, but you know, unfortunately, those aren't being presented to us, so, you know, I can only consider um the use that's in front of me with an application that's viable and and you know, to get rid of that sea of parking and give it a use and to increase affordable housing, I think those are all great gains, I think the brick architecture is refreshing. Um you know, it's very high quality, which I think really starts to combat the stigma that we sometimes feel with affordable housing. So I I appreciate that very much. Um you know, and I think, you know, all the sidewalks they've added, you know, that's that's, you know, it's it's not a low budget type of proposal that they're doing and they've given it tremendous care, I think, you know, the issues with traffic with the lane, you know, switching, I mean, that's a state issue, that's not this project's fault. Um so, you know, I've just, you know, continue to encourage um the planting around some of the fire pit areas. You know, that looked like that could be a little bit more developed, but you know, the these are small issues, you know, encourage native plantings in the wetland edge. Um but you know, those certainly don't um dissuade my overall um you know, appreciation and care that the project has been given to date, so that's that's pretty much where I end.
Chuck Kean, just here, thank, thank you, Marcy.
Uh Massimo? Yeah, hi, good evening, everyone, um I'll tell you, I'm I'm pretty happy with uh with the changes that I've seen from the applicant. Um you know, I I I'm more about like, like, I I love to see that there's there's so much comfort added in the middle of of these buildings uh for the tenants. Um I was pretty impressed with that. Um also, I was thinking about like the the traffic and the traffic study that was uh that was done. Um you know, in front of here um on the main road there and I gotta tell you, you know, the movie theater handled that pretty well and and they had um you know, lots of cars coming in at the same time and leaving at the same time, and it seemed like the town was um I it seemed like that area handled that pretty well with the traffic light there and uh so on and so forth, so so I'm pretty happy to see that um, you know, um I I don't think the traffic is gonna be much of an impact there. As far as the density is concerned, you know, um you know, i- i- if it was any other area, I'd be I'd be concerned about it. Um I'm not so concerned about the density, just like I kind of feel like Joe Chadwick feels about about this particular area being condensed with apartments, I think if there's anywhere in town that we could get away with uh condensing that and getting some affordable housing uh extra units in for for uh for us um in the Affordable Housing uh Act. I think this area would be the one we we uh that I'd be happy with uh saying yes to. Um you know, the the buffer between the you you know, I and I was just thinking that uh I was just thinking like it 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 would be if if there's like Marcy was talking a little bit about, you know, certain plantings going certain areas and stuff like that and I mean, if there could be a line of trees between that building, um the storage building and the um and the um and the, um, and the, um, uh, the apartment buildings, um, that would be a pretty cool buffer, um, and, and it would be great for, you know, for our, uh, our plant life. Um, but overall, I'm really impressed on, uh, what the applicant's team has done and how they addressed all the problems and, I mean, um, and, and all the issues that we had as a commission. Um, and, and, and they really, they really, every, every lick of what we were talking about tried to address some. And, and sometimes we got to be careful with that because style of buildings and, you know, certain things like that, that, you know, I liked the more contemporary style. Everybody has a different taste, right? But, you know, um, but, uh, but that's no hair there. Uh, both styles are really pretty. And, uh, overall, I'm really happy with the project. Thank you.
Chuck, thank you, Massimo. Sharon?
Hi, thank you. Um, I also am very appreciative of the applicant's ability to listen to everything that, um, the commission said and responded in such a really positive way, you know, changing the architecture really makes a big difference. I agree with Fred. I'm a peaks, gables and clapboard girl. But, um, you know, the look of the brick and the use of the beige and the columns, I think really made a big difference, as well as the increased, um, central area with the, the amenities for the tenants with the, um, gathering areas and, um, all of that space, I think, really makes it look more like a pleasant area to live in. Um, um, as far as the density goes, I'm very curious actually about the, um, traffic report and, um, that shared use dense, the report that maybe there could be some decrease in the required number of parking, which might allow for a less dense kind of construction. So I don't really know anything about that. That's not my area of expertise, obviously. But if the town would pursue something like that, that might be interesting. As well as the traffic pattern there, the traffic pattern there is really confusing. So if we could get the, um, DOT to come in and, and look at that, um, you know, when the theater was in, I don't think that bridge had been reconstructed. And I don't think the lanes had been rerouted, um, for that long. I, I think the theater had been gone before all of that construction was, um, completed. So I really think that that is an issue of the flow and the parking. The other thing that, um, that I still have a problem with is the use of that building as a storage facility. Now that that development looks so beautiful and residential, often you find in other residential complexes, um, developers offer fitness centers and clubhouse rooms and things like that for their tenants. And I'm thinking that that space in the, um, old cinema building would be perfect for that kind of maybe family entertainment rooms or fitness center or even, you know, a small urgent care facility, uh, there. I really feel that there is a better use for that building than, um, than storage, especially with, um, the access that the tenants would be able to have to it. So I would love to see, um, that kind of consideration happen. The other, um, piece is I haven't heard anything about any infrastructure for electric vehicle charging stations. And I was wondering if that had been taken into consideration. I'm sorry, I have not brought it up before. I, um, again commend the, um, the applicant for responding to all of the suggestions that we made and especially the use of native, um, landscaping all throughout the property. And I really think that having affordable housing in Branford is something that we need. So I commend them for that as well. So that's how I feel about the project.
Great. Thank you, Sharon.
Um, in terms of my comments, uh, well, we can't get Regal back. Uh, but, um, yeah, my, my, you know, looking at it from the affordable housing point of view, there, we, we've had experiences of either a beacon application or, you know, even the idea of putting higher density stuff down by the old Branford schools or whatever, where you, where you just generate a, a ton of local opposition. Um, that, that, the kind of, uh, you know, big picture wise, we have a duty to provide affordable housing. We have a duty to, uh, you know, to, to do it in a way that's consistent with our community. Um, this seems like a good, good site for it. Even the opposition that we've heard isn't to the housing side, it was to the self-storage side. Uh, and, and I don't know, maybe there's more opposition tonight. I don't know. Um, but so, so that, it, it, it checks that box, the twenty percent, I, you know, that's been the, been the push. Also, I, you know, I, I wanna, w- w- we don't allow housing in the industrial zone. You know, it takes longer to build out, but we do want that, you know, the office parts to have space for that. So, so what's left? I mean, this, this site works for that. And, and, um, you know, so, so that, that's sort of been my overall big picture of that, to, 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 you know, get the twenty percent. Um, and, and so we get credit and it helps people, you know, it's, it's a real utility. There's a need. Um, and, and you've done the other features, you made the dumpsters closer. Those are the kind of things I was looking at, you know, do you have to go too far with your dumpster? You made an effort to get them closer, you know, little things like that, adding, adding the sidewalks and those are great. So, um, I'm generally supportive of that. I, I ha- I would question about cutting the parking back even further because I think you had to, I mean, this, this is not, this is complying with the state standard, which is not, it's a little bit different than our regulations. And, um, you know, I, 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 I think even though it's mixed use, you'd end up having to park real far away if you had touched it, my, my senses. So I, I mean, that, that's just my sense of that. But, um, so I'm, I'm generally, uh, okay with that. Um, you know, I, I understand the questions about the use, although I think this project depends on self-storage because there's so little parking needed for self-storage. You put any other type of use in there. I, I think that you did, that would, uh, you know, you'd have to provide more parking and it would be tough fitting it all on the site. At least that's my general sense of things. So, um, that's, uh, th- those are my general thoughts. Um, why don't we open it up and see if there's any public comment? Does any member of the public wish to comment? Uh, Evan, do you see any?
Uh, just to reiterate, uh, there's a raise hand button down at the bottom of your screen. You can type into the chat that you'd like to speak or just wave your hand in front of the camera. Uh, it looks like we do have one person. Uh, Sharon, would you like to speak?
Um, yes, I just have a few concerns. Um, going by the number of lines, I couldn't really tell how many parking spaces there were. But if you're having all those mixed use, um, businesses that are open during the daytime, you might not be taking into consideration that a lot of people are working from home now. And so you said, oh, it won't be an issue because, you know, it's daytime use for the mixed use part. But there could be some retirees that are living there. There could be some people that work from home. So it didn't seem to me like there was enough parking for that whole area.
Do I know where Sharon lives?
Yeah, yeah, Sharon.
Oh, sorry. I put my name and, and my address earlier. Sharon Smith Allen, Fifty Home Place.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing is density. I think this is huge. I mean, right across the highway, there's this enormous apartment building that was put up and I had no idea how big that was going to be. It's humongous. Do we really need another building right on the other side of the highway? Now, you're saying, um, twenty fo- twenty percent are going to be affordable. Well, most people, um, I know at least four people that are looking for housing in Branford and they can't afford affordable housing. And then went back when, um, those, uh, senior housing went in behind the post office. My mother couldn't afford the affordable units in that building. So I know that affordable housing is based on what the rents are in, in Branford. But I don't think that affordable, the affordable housing is affordable to anybody in Branford. So I think that's a farce and I think this is too big for that area, especially we have all those housing on the other, the other half. What we really need is affordable housing in Branford where there's units that people could actually afford, not, not being called so-called, so-called affordable housing. So you pass, um, a large amount of buildings to, I mean, I, I agree totally with Joe Bayuso. It's like, you're, you're saying that you're going to put all these apartments in there because twenty percent are affordable, but I don't see how those units are affordable to the people that are looking.
Chuck, thank, thank you. Um, are there other comments from the public?
I do not see anyone else.
Okay, um, Mr. Nuff, did you, uh, uh, have any further comments? I know we left over the question of continuation. I mean, my sense is that it might be helpful if we got the W, we're, we're not going to decide tonight. Uh, uh, they, there, there may be the WPCA stuff. Harry's going to make a few more comments. You may want to tweak a few things, but, uh, but, I mean, you could close it. But, but that, my sense would be, why not just continue it to the next meeting? But anyway.
But, um, uh, let me make a few responses and then maybe, uh, address the issue of closing or not. I think you're reading my mind, Mr. Chairman, because I was going to kind of push the envelope a little bit, uh, asking if you would consider voting this evening. Um, and, and if, if any member of the commission were willing to do so, obviously we, we've been at this a long time, of course. Um, we're heartened and we very much appreciate the recognition by the commission members, the work that, you know, the applicant has done. And, and as you know, I'm just the guy who talks, but, but it's, uh, my client, since the team that has made all these responses. Um, as I said, we're grateful for their input as well. Um, just to respond specific to a few things, the right Mr. Chairman, the self-storage is critical both because it does require parking and doesn't generate traffic. So that's, um, that's a huge, um, uh, component of this. Commissioner Hutner's comments, about a clubhouse, a gym and urgent care, all those items are in the, um, first floor of the building directly adjacent to Route One. Um, so no need for those to be in the self-storage building. Uh, but those things are included in the, uh, uh, the first floor of the mixed-use building along Route One. There are EV chargers shown on the plans. Um, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, we don't want to reduce the parking beyond what we've already done. I think this is, is, is at a minimum. I think it's, uh, um, the right amount. We can reduce the parking at the Walgreens parcel by virtue of our lease with, with, uh, Walgreens. Uh, but I think, you know, we really hit the sweet spot on parking and don't need to reduce that any further. You know, we've talked a lot about density, I, you know, um, I think the commission has had a, uh, fruitful and thoughtful exchange on that issue, um, particularly with regard to the impact of affordable on density. I don't know, I don't know that we need to go there any further. I know, Mr. Commissioner Bayuso has some concerns, uh, but as I said, it is, density is a direct outgrowth of the twenty percent affordable. And, um, you know, we, we heard a comment from, um, I don't know her last name, but the neighbor to the, uh, Iron Loop Center over, uh, next to Aldi's. Um, but this is the only comment we've seen that's negative from any resident of the town of Branford. Now with our neighbors, none of them have come to any meetings to voice any opposition. They've come to several meetings that we've had on site and they've been very supportive. They've been very grateful for everything that my applicant, uh, my client has done regarding to ensuring, you know, their comfort and safety and protection from any impacts to the site. Um, in terms of our closing, um, I think, I think that would be great because I, I just, I just don't know whether Harry is going to have something left, um, that he needs us to respond to substantive passion. And I know he hasn't completed his thorough, thorough review. Um, but, and I, and I know ultimately it's our choice whether or not we close this evening. But I, I guess I just want to hear a little bit more from Harry.
Harry Smith Town Planner, you know, I, I can't give you really any more. There might be a s- you know, I think we're largely where we're going to be, end up being. Um, and particularly based on all the feedback from the commission members. Um, there, you know, the, some of the items I've raised and probably will raise could potentially be addressed in condition. So I guess I sort of throw it back on you, Mr. Nuff.
Okay, no, no, got it.
And that you won't have opportunity to respond to anything I put forward to the commission in terms of additional comments or findings and conditions, as well as, you know, anything from the town engineer as well. His comments are outstanding, but that's, so, you know, as staff, um, um, at this point, pretty comfortable receding to doing a final review and, and any, you know, changes or issues I still see out there. I'd probably frame in the term, in the format of conditions, request the changes to the plans and let the commission decide. They want to approve those or not.
That's right. So, so in that, in that case, we're happy to close, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, then, um.
And this is predicated upon getting the WPCA feedback would not be considered new information, so.
Right.
Okay.
Right, right, I.
Okay, since that's a response to questions already on the table.
Right. Okay, then, uh, does, uh, would the, the, the applicant's request, then we close the hearing? Are there any further comments by any members of the commission or staff?
Yes, um, Sharon Hutner here. I just want to thank Mr. Nuff for pointing out about the, um, electric vehicle charging stations. I missed those on the plan, so thank you very much.
Chuck, thank you, Sharon. Any other questions or, or comments from commission members or staff?
Uh, does Harry need to write a conditional, you know, sometimes with big projects, you have to write a condition. It's, it's the big, I don't know what it's called. It's a big long document that says, you know, all the things that we've done to review and da, 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 da. I mean, it, do we want to do a poll or straw vote to give him an idea of how he can start to put that together?
Are there other conditions that, that you're thinking about, Marcy? Or I, I mean, the sense is frankly, as I read it, is, is an approval. Uh, uh, and wh- wh- what I don't know is if there are things like, you know, are we, you know, we're, we're good with the sidewalks, you are, you want to play with the landscaping? What, I mean, those are kind of like, are biting and stuff like that, which I, I don't know.
It, it was more, you know, just hearing them in the past where he goes through and says, you know, the, the project was reviewed by the traffic engineer, whereas this was done.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
That has to happen on this and sometimes he does a straw vote so he has a direction. That, that's the only reason I'm bringing it up, is to try to not have it go yet another meeting, you know, in response to what John's trying to get, you know, a vote.
No, my, 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 my.
I could certainly vote tonight if, if need be.
My, my expectation, I, I would like to have a written resolution, uh, and I'd like Harry to complete his review and I want, WPCA hasn't even acted on this yet. So I, I think it's, it's good to vote after they've acted. So I don't see any vote this evening. So, um, uh, but, and, and I, my, my suggestion is you do it written. The advantage of having it open is that, you know, if we close the hearing tonight and Harry says, okay, we want to, you may have some tweaks or whatever and they could actually make the changes or, you know, say, no, I can't do that. And, and otherwise, you know, we're potentially have some guesses. But my expectation is that assuming the review goes forward, we would be able to vote at the next meeting. And, and, and we'd have a written resolution available for that.
That would be terrific. And, and I think we still weren't close.
Okay. Okay, any other comments from anyone? Okay, so then we'll close these matters as a public hearing. Again, uh, where's my gen- oh, here it is. Yeah, so it's items number, uh, where were we? Six, seven, eight and nine. We've closed those matters as public hearing. And we have extensions on the subdivision, right? We don't, do we need any extensions?
Uh, they actually, I should have mentioned that, Harry Smith Town Planner, uh, extension was offered on the subdivision for, um, the time period, the commission needed to make a decision on that, which would expire before the September fifth meeting, since it's not a resubdivision, we believe.
Um, okay, so Mr. Nuff's client granted the extension for the subdivision application for the, to the September fifth meeting.
Yes, we covered that.
Okay, good.
Chuck, Fred Russo?
Fred?
I, I'm sorry, I, I was muted when you said it was ready more, uh, responses. And I was talking to myself because I was muted, but I just wanted to say, I think we should close the, we should close the public hearing because I think we've heard about as much as we're going to hear. I think we've heard about as much as we're gonna hear, I don't think anything's gonna change significantly. I think the, we know the general consensus of what the commission is. And, uh, I think we've, we've, uh, you know, we don't have to beat it to death. We pretty much know what's, what's going on here. I think we have a pretty good positive response, so my opinion would be, a- and I agree with you, Chuck. Let's close it and, and have a resolution for the next meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you, Fred. Okay, so then, um, there's a consensus on that. The, we're closing the public hearing on these items. And, uh, we'll take this up at our meeting likely on September fifth. So thank you, Mr. Nuff.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
That brings us into item number ten, which is Anthony Capasso. And Anthony and Vincenzo Capasso, trustees, Bernard, a Pellegrener trustee's owner, sixty-six, seventy-six, eighty-two Totucket Road. And Zero Tweed Road. This is the four-lock re-subdivision and coastal site plan. I think we had opened the, uh, public hearing at our July eighteenth meeting. Is the applicant, uh, ready to proceed? I think the applicant is muted, though.
Harry, uh, were you gonna say something? Sorry, I don't.
No, just that you can unmute yourself, that's all.
Okay, yeah, I thought I clicked it and it, it didn't unmute, so my apologies. Um, so again, for the record, my name is Tim Hul, uh, civil engineer and project manager with B L Companies. Uh, I am out of our Hartford Office one hundred Constitution Plaza. Uh, I am here to represent the applicant, uh, Mr. Anthony Capasso on this application. And I will initiate screen share now. Should be coming up. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, this overall lot, uh, overall plan, uh, may seem somewhat familiar to you all. Uh, this was previously reviewed under a re-subdivision application. Eh, approximately a year ago, maybe a little bit more. Uh, uh, I believe it received approval about a year ago, so the overall process was, you know, spring and into summer of twenty twenty-three. Uh, this application, as noted, uh, the public hearing was opened, uh, at the last meeting. However, we requested, uh, continuance, uh, without presentation. Um, there, there was a little bit of a hang up with the, the notifications, uh, that went out, so. Uh, this is the first presentation for these revisions. I don't wanna go too far into it because essentially we kept the vast majority of the original. Uh, approved re-subdivision, uh, intact, so I'll just kind of gloss over, uh, overall, it's, uh. Sixty-six, seventy-six to eighty-two Totucket Road and then Zero Tweed Road. Uh, those are the three lots in question, so jumping back to the survey plan, these are kind of the three lots. We have sixty-six. There's an existing house on that lot here, uh, seventy-six to eighty-two Totucket is this kind of C-shaped lot in the middle. And then Zero Tweed Road is a parcel kind of landlocked in the rear. I just moved over to our revised re-subdivision plan. Essentially, this keeps the same intent as previously approved. Uh, there is a tweak on the overall layout, but it is still four lots. Uh, there's still four, uh, single-family. Dwellings on each lot proposed. Um, the main highlight for the adjustments to the layout is. There is a slight kink now in the, um. The right-of-way here, um, a- and then we did modify the, the lot configuration slightly. Uh, the overall intent here for this, uh, revision is to, uh, to revise the grades. Through the core of the site to make it more, uh, more gentle slopes as possible. And to allow for a little bit more capture of storm water. Uh, around the perimeter of the site and then take the surface storm water and put it underground. Overall, uh, opening up more usable green space on the site for the, the collective four residences. So, w- we did bend the subdivision road a little bit to make the grading a little bit more friendly and allow for more transitions. I'll touch on that when I jump to the grading plan in a minute. We did modify these lot configurations slightly to make sure that they comply with the minimum lot widths for the Pine Orchard, uh. Regulations, uh, which they do. And then there's a, a modification of the access point for Lot Four, um, a- and I'll jump to the site plan. Overall, the house locations have not changed at all. Uh, the driveway locations are. Pretty much the same for the front two lots here. The back two lots, we did have to kind of merge those driveways together to make sure that the lots have. Uh, meet the Pine Orchard zoning regulations, um, but they do have ample access. Uh, other than that, the layout, uh, like I mentioned, we did kink this, uh. The right-of-way and the, and the subdivision road, it is still proposed to be a private road. But other than that, the layout is substantially the same. Jumping forward to the grading plan, uh, this is where the bulk of the changes came. Uh, previously, uh, I can actually bring up the previous approved plan here. So the, the previous approved plan, this was, uh, submitted back in July. Uh, it looks like July twenty-first of twenty-three. The grading was really focused just around, uh, the houses themselves and the areas immediately surrounding it. And then, you know, the, the subdivision road and the basin. Um, essentially what we have done with this revision is to extend the grading to cover the majority of the site. To really, uh, soften out the slopes, create more usable green space, uh, on each lot for each house. And then, as I mentioned, uh, provide for better stormwater management. Uh, a quick highlight on that, previously. The transition between these two, uh, fr- the front two lots had a pretty steep slope coming down from the middle lot to. The, uh, to the eastern lot. We've feathered that out, uh, a bit to slow down stormwater flow, but we also are proposing. Uh, where these flow arrows are and then the grading contours pick up. We are proposing a small drainage channel to collect that stormwater and capture it in our stormwater management system. Uh, a- and properly manage that to infiltrate as much as possible, but also to. To prevent any sort of flow issues with water flowing into some of the houses onsite or potentially offsite as well. We do have a similar approach along the, uh, the edge of. Lot one here, uh, as it abuts the, the two abutting properties to the north and, uh, west. Uh, so that, generally, that's the, one of the main drivers for the improvements. The other major improvement that we made from a stormwater standpoint is. The surface stormwater basin that was down here in the southwest corner has been removed and we are replacing it with an underground. Stormwater infiltration system. Um, the, the primary reasons for that are twofold. One, to unlock more usable green space for the development for each of the, um, you know, the residences. But also to remove the surface basin, which, uh, there were, uh, heard some concerns about potential standing water and mosquitoes. So, uh, kind of provides, uh, a benefit from both standpoints. Um, there is also a little bit of stormwater infiltration, uh, along. The either side of the subdivision road. Uh, we do have a little bit in the back of, uh, Lot Four for the roof drainage back here. Um, but overall, it's the stormwater infiltr- storage and infiltration is all underground. Um, we do still have a drainage discharge to the D O T system, um, and we are. Uh, we are acknowledging that we need to file with D O T for an encroachment permit for that and the driveway connection, uh, that is. In progress right now. For utilities, um, we realigned the utility slightly to match up with the revised subdivision. Road layout and the driveway layouts, but they're all substantially the same. Still have underground electric and telecommunications. Uh, still have, uh, domestic, a copper domestic water feed to each house. Um, we do have a. Uh, an eight-inch water line coming up the subdivision road and ending at a hydrant. So there is a fire hydrant access at the end of the cul-de-sac. Um, and it also provides a means for flushing of that line for, uh, for the utility provider. For, uh, sanitary, uh, service, we have septics on each lot. Those are the exact same locations and size as the previous subdivision. Nothing has changed with those. And landscaping, very minor tweaks, um, but essentially we have, um. The street trees all along the cul-de-sac. Uh, we are not proposing any lighting on the subdivision road, given that it's just four houses. Um, we do not feel that, uh, street lighting is, uh, is necessary here. And I guess one final item I would like to clarify, uh, Mr. Capasso is intending on this development. To stay within his family. He is, uh, has purchased his property and is looking to do the subdivision. With the intent to convey these lots to his, uh, to his children, so. Uh, he, he does want to keep this in the family. Um, there was discussion with, uh, with. Harry and Evan today and, and through the week about, uh, the open space. We are looking to, um. We're looking to. Use the, uh, or follow the Connecticut State General statutes for the fee in lieu of. And there is an exception in there where if it is a subdivision of less than five lots and the, the. The properties are being kept within immediate family, that the fee in lieu of is, uh, or, or. The applicant is exempt from the fee in lieu of. Um, I believe that was going to be put into a, a potential draft. Condition that we provide a written affidavit confirming that and, um, I, I believe that should be. I, I believe Harry was working on that earlier, so. I think with that, I would like to open it up to any questions or comments.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Hul. Um, why don't we have, uh, Evan, did you do the staff report on this one?
Uh, I did. I'll briefly go through the staff report, but I also sent out a memo this afternoon to the commissioners. Um, uh, sort of addressing the outstanding issues that were in my, uh, revised staff report. Um, this is the second staff report, even though this is their first presentation. So after my first report was given to them, they made a few changes. Uh, these included, uh, the addition of, uh, one additional street tree. Um, as well as, uh, getting us some more information on the open space, uh. Dedication that we're, that we would like to take care of. They confirmed that they will privately own the proposed street. As well as have an H O A be responsible for the maintenance of the stormwater system. They, uh. They, or I did wanna get the commission's impression of, um, whether or not they would like a financial guarantee. Uh, for the installation and maintenance of soil erosion and sediment control measures. Uh, we did add a condition, uh, that would require this if they would like us to do so, uh, but I'll go back to that in a little bit. I think for the most part. Uh, they did address the majority of my concerns. Um, onto the memo that I sent out, uh, this afternoon, uh, there was four items that were left outstanding. In that previous staff report, um, the first of which was the, uh, open space requirement. Um, section three, four, N of our, uh, regulations, which I'll bring up right now. All right, so here is that section that I was referring to. Um, it does date that the open space reservation requirement shall not apply if the transfer of land is for five parcels or less. Uh, which this application is proposing for lots, uh, and that if a, uh, family mem- or all the properties are. To be conveyed to a family member, um, which they also seem to be satisfying. The commission shall require the subdivider to provide sufficient documentation to assure that any exemption. Claimed under this section is legally warranted. Such documentation shall generally include, uh, an affidavit by the subdivider as to the identity. Identity of the transferees and adequate language on the final subdivision plans indicating that any transfer. Uh, may result, or any trans- transfer not protected under the state statute and this regulation. May result in revocation of subdivision approval. Um, I did add conditions, uh, for this that I'll bring up as well. Here they are. Um, the other outstanding issue was, um. The applicant had submitted the East Shore Health District approval for the septic systems from last year's approval. Uh, I reached out to the East Shore Health District. Uh, they stated that there isn't any change to the septic locations or types. Um, and that the lot lines didn't seem to protect or impact the proposed septic locations. Uh, I added a condition that would require for a formal approval from the East Shore Health District be, um. Uh, required, uh, prior to the signing of the Mylar. Um, we also had a, a memo from the town engineer as a follow-up to his original comments that I circulated to you. It seems that most of those items were very minor in nature and that, uh. A condition could be added requiring that anything from that memo be taken care of prior to the Mylar signing. Um, and we also wanted you to make a determination on that fin- on the, uh. Financial guarantee for the soil erosion sediment control measures. Uh, if that is something that you guys would like to require, there is also a condition added there. Um, going on to the findings and conditions we're proposing. Uh, one is that the coastal site plan is consistent with the goals and policies of the Coastal Area Management Act. Uh, our conditions are the filing, the following items shall be addressed or added to the record subdivision map to the satisfaction. Of the town planner or his designee prior to the signature of the chair, uh, of the chairperson and recording of the record subdivision map. A, submission of a soil erosion financial guarantee in favor of the town of Branford. Uh, B, the applicant shall provide documentation showing all issues raised by the town engineers. Or in the town engineer's memo dated August fifth, twenty twenty-four have been resolved. Uh, C, the applicant shall provide an affidavit demonstrating the transfer of land as part of the subdivision is to a parent, child, brother, sister, grandparent. Grandchild, aunt, uncle, or first cousin of the transferrer for no consideration. And as a result, the open space reservation requirement shall not apply, uh, per sections three, four, N of the town of Branford subdivision regulations. D, the applicant shall revise all applicable sheets that did show the, uh. Point seven-nine acres of open space that they originally had proposed, uh, shall be removed. Uh, the applicant shall add adequate language on the final subdivision plans indicating that any transfer is not protected. Under that state statute or under section three, four, N of the town Branford zoning subdivision regulations. May result in the revocation of the subdivision approval. Uh, F, the applicant shall submit documentation showing approval of the proposed lots and septic systems from the East Shore Health District. Um, and then finally, all requirements of section six, three of the subdivision regulations shall be met. Uh, and then a follow-up condition, as may be directed by the town planner or his designes. Designee, necessary measures to control any dust generated by Phil brought into the site or movement of earth material on site shall be implemented.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Evan. This question to Evan and Harry, do you have a recommendation about the, uh. A financial guarantee for the soil erosion control issues?
I think it would be appropriate.
Harry, you, you, you're muted, but yeah.
Harry Smith, Town Planner, yeah, I'd agree with that.
Okay. Okay, then, uh, do you, do you have an amount or do you?
Uh, they would have to come back with an estimate, um, of. The amount required, run it by the engineering department and then, uh. They would have ninety days to make, you know, dress all these conditions that Evan's proposed and there's additional ninety days, of course. Beyond that, since it's a hundred and eighty days, half a year to do all of that, including estimating the financial guarantee and then we'll come back to the commission. The commission to establish that of a financial guarantee itself.
Okay, let's, uh, any questions or comments from commission members before we open up to the public? Hearing none, then let's open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment? Evan, you see anyone?
I do not see anybody.
I do not see anybody.
Okay, uh, does the uh, applicant have any further comments?
Uh, I do not. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, any further comments by commission members and staff?
Uh, Joe Valuso, I have one question.
Sure, Joe.
Um. This is, this is owned by one person, right? And it's being divided into four separate lots? And my question is.
It's three lots now, I think, right?
Yes, it's three lots now owned by the same person uh, to be subdivided into four total lots.
Four, four total lots, but I mean, are those four total lots gonna be separately owned and deeded? Uh, how does that work? And, and the road, they said they're gonna maintain the road or the access road with the cul-de-sac. At, at any time, is that up to, at least a little bit up to, uh, close to uh. Town standards in case down the road, you hear all of a sudden that now they wanna turn it over to the town and. Over time, I'm talking about many years from now that things can change. I mean, is, is there anything that we should be concerned about now? Or that could be taken handled later in the future? I, I was just questioning and uh, the legal, legalities of all, all this stuff.
Sure, uh, so the uh, the properties will be uh, transferred to. Uh, Mr. Capasso's children. Uh, that's, that's the end game, so there will be a deeding of the four lots to his uh. To his immediate family. Um. So I, I believe that should answer uh, that first question. Um, regarding the, the subdivision road itself, uh, we did design it to the maximum extent practicable to meet town standards. The one area where we do not is the grade requirements. Uh, this lot does have a pretty severe grade change. And uh, there's just not enough depth in the lot to meet the vertical curve. Design requirements. However, everything else meets town standards, the roadway. Uh, the roadway thickness and design, uh, the, the width, the curb requirements, all of that meets town standards. Um, it is the intention for this all to stay privately owned. Um, Mr. Capasso does want this to stay within the family. And have a mini family compound. Uh, however, we did design it to the maximum extent practicable to meet town standards for that very reason, so. Uh, it, it meets town standards as best as possible in the event down the road, there is. Discussion about this becoming a town owned or maintained roadway.
Thank you.
Just a question, I assume the regulations either, I don't know, it's Pine Orchard or Branford. Uh, it, private roads are okay? There's no requirement to be public? I assume.
No, there's.
I didn't know if our subdivision regulations required the road be public.
It just requires it meets the zoning regulations, which in this case of Pine Orchard, I don't believe they have a. A frontage requirement on a public street, is that correct?
Uh, correct.
Okay, yeah, so that's what allows this to happen.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from commission members or? Uh, staff? It's okay, then uh, it, it looks like something we can close and maybe take up in a little bit, so thank you, Mr. Louie. So with that, uh, that completes our public hearing items. Um. And uh, correspondence, Harry, you list one thing under correspondence here. Do you wanna review that with us?
Uh, Harry Smith, town planner, let me put it up quickly. We did send this letter. Um. To the commissioners, um. So it should be visible on the screen now. Um, I did this uh, this chairman at your direction. And um, this is also going to be in the wetlands, or I think an identical version of this letter differently addressed. It's going to be in the wetlands agency, um, as well as WPCA. Um, so uh, to sum it up in a nutshell. Um, this site along Commercial Parkway, there was a location of former Amazon approval. For a warehouse, um, and a recently posed conceptual plan for residential development. Um. One of the uh, concerns I think raised then was that it would, by the engineering staff, was there would be a need for a uh. Capacity study of the sewer system in this area. Um, even though the uh, potential residential development. Applicant pulled out, uh, the property owner proceeded with the um. The capacity study on his own um, dime, so to speak. And you can see the letter describes it better than I could, um. The uh, results of that, apparently this firm AECom conducted the uh. Um, capacity study. What they're calling here a sewer impact evaluation, um. And states there were two manhole covers that were surcharged, um. Which means I think water came up through them, uh, indicating there was uh. Here, a major issue of freshwater infiltration of the sewers. Uh, that, um, consulting firm made a. Recommendation as stated in the letter here, that no additional flow be added to this section of the collection system. Um, again, that's, I think, a direct quote and. This attorney saying until the causes surcharges could be identified and corrected as a. Summation of what was in that um, study. Um, at this point, um. He goes on to discuss. Nothing specific, this is really specific to the property that was subject to the uh, Amazon approval. Um. With respect to trying to resolve where the freshwater infiltration is coming from. And try to fix that. Um, so this is under process. Um. I, the WPCA has mentioned discussion about prior applications and agenda. Will be meeting on the thirteenth. I can update the commission about the progress of this. Um, there's been no action to um. Um. Adopt the recommendations of the consultant at this point, so I don't know exactly how the WPCA will be handling this. Um, but we will update you further about that if you'd like us to. Or maybe you can get, you know, some direct communication from the town engineer, which would be. A lot more on point probably than any summary I can provide, so. Um, I think that's probably more than enough info about the correspondence at this point. It's just out there, it's been presented to the commission and other town bodies and uh. It's a, there is a problem that needs to be resolved, I understand that process to do that's underway.
Great, thanks, Harry. It's, it's interesting background, it's really WPCA stuff, but it also affects. Development opportunities within the town and, and uh, so it's good that we were aware of it. Okay, uh. Sure, Marcy?
Um, I wasn't sure if I understood, so the study that he did. Based on the volume of sewage needed for Amazon, or is it based on the volume needed to. Do his development, or is it based on the current state with no proposed development?
I believe it was based on the proposal for the residential development, but it wasn't, um. When they did the analysis of what was going on in the system, they did some observations and testing. So during a, a storm event, they observed the surcharge, water coming right out of the manhole covers. Um, so that was put forward and that's the real issue, whether there's. And, and until that's resolved, they're saying there shouldn't be any additional capacity, there really is no additional capacity available. Because during storm events, the, the system's already surcharged.
And, and do we know if that. Statement is, um, I don't know how to say it, I mean. It, it, it kind of feels like they're trying to reserve capacity for their own development by stopping.
Uh, eh, I, I, I know, I'm getting a little out of my uh, wheelhouse here, but I believe the study alone doesn't reserve the capacity. They, they would actually need to make an application to WPCA. I think they work on a first come, first served basis.
Wondering if the study had, went far enough to. Have any, you know, potential theories as to why something like that would happen, whether it's a, a total capacity issue or. You know, a bubble in the system, so to speak, that just needs maintenance. That's, and it feels like.
I think what they're saying is somewhere there's a break in the pipe that's allowing water to get in there, or there's other things being tied in. To the sewer system, like stormwater drainage, to such an extent that those um. Storm events are creating so much flow into the system that it's surcharging up to the manhole covers.
No, it's really a townwide.
Uh, it's really in this area because, you know, the, the towns are broken up in these fifty little districts. So it's a couple of, it's a portion of the system, a pretty big portion, but. And I'm gonna really stop there because, you know, this is town engineer's purview and.
Well, no, I think, I, I think you make a really good point that there could be combined storm sewers. That are still connected to the system and I'd be very curious to know if that exists and I don't, I'm sure that the report didn't go for enough.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna, like I said, it could be a lot of different things, I just, they don't know yet and uh, I'll leave it to the town engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Um. Let's uh, let's go back to our item number ten. Of our public hearing items, that may be something we can act on, that was the reset, the four lot re-subdivision. Uh, Evan, do you wanna pull up your uh, staff uh, resolution recommendation?
Can you guys see it?
Yes. Okay, so um, again, this is a tweak of a prior approval, essentially, it looks like. And uh. I think Evan reviewed with us the proposed uh, findings and conditions. Again, it's weird because it's. Not within our zoning jurisdiction, but it is within our subdivision jurisdiction. That's within Pine Orchard zoning. Uh, but Pine Orchard doesn't have subdivisions, so they gotta come here. And these are all the uh. You know, the Evan kind of went through these, I don't know if it's necessary to go through them again. Anyone have any questions? Comments, if not, does someone, I, I, I didn't hear any opposition or comments, uh. Here's staff believe it complies, they come within this statutory exemption for open space for distribution to family members. And they have to file certain affidavits, and that's statutory, and it's in our regs too. That's covered in the resolution, you'll have to submit an affidavit. So uh, if it looks okay to someone, make a motion to uh, approve the application by adopting the uh, finding. And conditions as recommended in the staff report personally projected in front of us.
Chadwick makes that motion.
Motion by Joe Chadwick is our second.
Fred Russo will second that.
Second by Fred. Any further discussion? How was in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo in favor.
Joe Valuso?
Joe Valuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Chair is also in favor. Okay, they're going also in our agenda, uh, we have three old business items. Uh, that I believe we all need to schedule public hearings for. Is that correct, Harry?
Uh, Harry Smith, town planner, um, I would recommend that we uh, leave the scheduling, the hearings to uh. The standing motion of the commission, so they can be done by the staff in consultation with the chair.
Right, so if that's okay, we'll just do that. And uh, for new business, uh, there's one item. Um, is that something you wanna mention anything about? That's Shretha Management.
Yeah, it's uh, my vacation of the site plan portion, I think of a special exception, um. I will be looking at this more closely and prob- possibly discussing with you. I think I'm probably comfortable changing, uh, excuse me. Uh, proving the modification, the reason for it is um. When they went to get approved from DOT, um, they uh, DOT are. Requested, required closing of one of the driveways and that's altered some of the uh, aspects of the. Parking lot layout in front of the building. This is an existing building on East Main Street, the big blue box, if you will. Came in for um, a pizza restaurant to replace some of the offices that have been there. And I think residential units. Uh, so I'll look at that and uh, either act on it as minor or bring it back to the commission in September.
Okay, great. Okay, and then for other business referral and application for a use variance from ZBA for nine Business Park Drive?
Uh, Evan's got this one.
Uh, so this referral is uh, from the ZBA for a use variance uh, for. To allow personal services, I can believe it's a wax bit, or a wax studio. Uh, in an IG two zone where that use is not permitted. Um, I believe the applicant uh, has been operating at this location. Um, and I'll bring up the site very briefly, it is seven dash nine. Uh, Business Park Drive, uh, right off of Leets Island Road, near the Stop a Chop and Dunkin' Donuts. Um. Here is the actual property, here's the actual business listed on Google. And here is the actual property and the lot lines. Number of businesses are in this location, like I said, they've been there for, um, you know, a few months or a year or so. Uh, and our statutes require that um, use variances be refer- referred to this commission for comment.
Our statutes or regulations?
Oh, I'm sorry, our, our regulations.
Okay, so we're, just so it's clear, what we. We normally don't comment, I guess we could, on applications before the ZBA and they're typically setback variances or bulk of coverage variances. But our regulations say that if someone wants to apply for a use variance, which is. Typically considered a more drastic change, then the ZBA should provide. You know, refer to the planning zoning commission to see if we wanna make any comments. We don't have to make any comments, uh, so um. They, and they still have to comply with the criteria. For use variances in the regulations, that's their job, but that's why, that's my understanding of why we even talking about this because. For a use variance as opposed to a standard setback or other variance. It's, it, you know, the regulations say we have an opportunity to make any comments. So with that, I don't have any comment. I'm happy with the ZBA making whatever decision they wanna make. It's not a drastic. Item in that mind, it's not a drastic change of use, personal services in the industrial zone, so. You know, I'm, I'm happy for them to apply the standards that they need to apply and make their decision, but what do other people think? So I'm happy saying no comment, that's fine.
So am I, no comment. There's plenty of businesses there already, so it's, it's not like it's uh, sticking out like a sore thumb.
Right, okay.
Fred Russo says the same as Joe and Chuck. I agree with you.
Okay, three no comments, others?
Marcy Paluzzi, no comment.
Right, okay. Okay, well.
You've got mail.
So, um. Harry and Evan, you, you can just transfer that the, the plane's on, you had, had no comment with respect to the application.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Okay, um, so anything else under other business, Harry?
Uh, we have nothing else listed, so there's nothing else we can discuss.
That's correct, it's a special meeting, great, okay, then do someone want to?
Fred Russo, I, I, I'd like to say, but, just, just an acknowledgement that uh, and I'm sure everybody on the commission knows that. You know, uh, uh, Elder Mac McWiggin passed.
Oh, yes, yes.
And uh, I just want to acknowledge she was with us for a long time as far as the commission, well before I was there. And he was instrumental uh, as our chairman. Uh, that's how I got kind of introduced to the business and uh, I just, I just thought we'd take a moment just to acknowledge this, this passing.
Uh, Fred, thank you so much, I'll jump in, I should have mentioned it myself, Mac was uh. I, I, I picked up stuff from Mac just by going to meetings for years. I, I did, the stuff I say at the beginning of the meetings, I, I'm sort of just paraphrasing the way he said it. He was so good at a lot of stuff, I mean, his, he, he, I'm. He, he was really big on not being political. I, I remember once where we went through an administration where someone wanted to, you know. You know, he did, wanted to put someone else in and demote somebody. And he just stormed up and down, I just remember him feeling real strong, you do. You do what's best for Branford, I don't care what party you're from or whatever, yeah, and I just, that's, that's to me like automatic. And it's probably the only reason automatic is because that's the way I was brought up, by going through all these meetings and that's the way it was done. And, and he instilled that, and, and he's instilled a lot of stuff, I mean, so absolutely, I mean, he was a great. Uh, you know, he, he was a just good, solid, everyday, regular. Uh, you know, he, he was a just good, solid, everyday, regular, common sense good guy who ran meetings well. I mean, I, I, you know, what can you say? And, uh, J- J- Joe Vauso, yeah, you, you've been, you, you went through them too, I mean.
Yeah, that's, that's the whole part of being here because there, there wasn't none of that political stuff. It was you're here to do a job based on regulations, based on common sense, based on your, your, your true opinion. And no politics. And I remember that situation where we, somebody came in there trying to change that. And he, he didn't last long. Got rid of him fast.
Yeah, no, it didn't. I, it was a one term, but, 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 I mean, that was, yeah, it is fair. And, and, you know, it was, so. Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, it was, it was a great model for me. Yes. So thank you, Fred, for mentioning that.
Chuck, Fred Russo, one more thing, wha- uh, 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 recollection. But one thing about Mac, when it was a night for baseball, those meetings always ended or, I don't care what was on the agenda. He pushed that along or along. I think, I believe he liked the Red Sox, I remember.
Nah, he was Yankees man. That, that was, yeah, yeah, that was, that was just.
Oh, well, that was, that was, he was there.
Right. No, absolutely. Great.
I just thought that we should mention that, so thank you.
Absolutely. Yep, great. Okay, with that, uh, I guess, uh, someone make a motion to adjourn?
Fred Russo makes that motion to adjourn.
Motion by Fred, is there a second?
Marcy will second it.
Second, Marcy. Any further discussion? All in favor, Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Fred Russo?
Fred Russo's in favor.
Joe Vauso?
Joe Vauso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
The chair is also in favor. Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you everyone, September.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.